Toastmaster is Deepa and you are muted.
Thank you, Renee. Year of my life trying to negotiate my way out of being staying muted or not muted. So whether you're negotiating for a better pay, a better project, a better work-life balance, or as in the case of my children, asking for a new toy, taking a longer screen time. Negotiation is still an important aspect of our lives. Unfortunately, negotiation is not an inherited trait, but something that has to be developed. As John F. Kennedy once said, "Let us never negotiate out of fear, but let us never fear to negotiate." With that, let's get started with the day. We have an excellent lineup of speakers, but before we go there, I would like to introduce Priya Shastri, who will be sharing with us the leader profile of the day. Priya, over to you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay. I'm not able to see myself in the pin-up screen, so if you could. Thank you, Toastmaster. So today's theme, negotiation, let's start with the definition of negotiation. What is negotiation? Negotiation is an act of reaching a favorable agreement between two opposing parties. Note the word opposing. If both the parties were on the same side, that is not negotiation. That would be communication. So negotiation is both an art and a science. It's an art because like the different colors on a canvas, you can use the different ways of thinking before negotiation, before making a statement. So like you see in the backdrop, think. So answer to every question in the word think. Is it true? Is it happening? Is it inspiring? Is it necessary? Is it kind? Once you get the answers to these questions, the statement that you make would be very perfect. Take, for instance, the kid who negotiates with his mom. The kid says, "Mom, I want to eat a bag of chips before going to bed." The mom says, "You have to read a book before going to bed." The kid cleverly says, "I'll eat one chip and read one thing before going to bed." So the kid has successfully negotiated his way between the mom's demands and his own preference. Today's leader profile is about Gloria Steinem. Gloria Steinem, as you see in the picture here, she is... Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Gloria Steinem is an American author, journalist, who started the feminist movement in 1970s. She has been... She has been very instrumental in writing the first feminist magazine, MS, in 1972. Her famous article about female genital mutilation appeared in this magazine in 1979. In 1992, she founded The Choice USA, which is an organization that encourages women to have their own reproductive choice. Today, women leaders encourage our women participants to step out of their comfort zones and negotiate their ways into powerful positions. We, as women leaders, multitask and get a lot of things done. So I urge all our women participants to stand up, rise up to any challenges, and inspire younger women and daughters. Back to you, Toastmasters.
Wonderful, Priya. Thank you so much. You are absolutely right. We all need to rise up to the challenge of negotiating our way into a successful career. Moving on, I would now like to request our counter, Shannon Roberts, to please explain the R rules. Shannon?
Greetings, Madam Toastmaster, fellow Toastmasters and guests. The purpose of the R counter is to note the words and sounds that are used as a crutch or pause filler by anyone who speaks. During the meeting, I'll listen for overused words, including "and," "well," "but," "so," and "you know." I will also listen for filler sounds, including "ah," "um," and "er." I will note when a speaker repeats a phrase, and at the end of the meeting, I will report out the number of times that each speaker uses these expressions. Thank you, Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Shannon. Next up, I request and invite the grammarian of the day, Helen. Over to you, Helen.
Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. Good evening, guests and fellow Toastmasters. As the grammarian, I will share with you the word of the day, and I'll also be listening for proper use of English and grammar as you give your speeches, as well as very interesting turns of phrases that you may use in your speeches as an example for others. I'm going to share the word of the day, which is overwhelm. It is used as a verb, meaning something that would be overwhelming to you or you would be overwhelmed by, or to be completely overwhelmed by a superior force of numbers, an example of overwhelmed by an invading army, or overwhelmed with grief or terror. So I'm sure that you'll be able to use it in your speeches today and in your everyday conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. And to keep us within our time limits today, we have Sujin as the timer of the day. Sujin, would you be pleased enough to share the timer rules?
Hello. Hello, everyone. Yeah, thank you, Toastmasters. I'm today's timer. As a timer, I will remind all speakers how much time they spent on their speech. And for icebreaker speech, between four to six minutes, I will show green screen at four minutes, and the yellow at five, and the red at six. For speech, between five to seven minutes, I will show green background at five minutes, and yellow at six, and red at seven. For evaluation, you will see green background at two minutes, and yellow at two minutes and thirty seconds, and then red at three. And for table topics, you will see green background at one minute, and the yellow at one and thirty seconds, and then red at two minutes. Yeah, thank you. Back to you, Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Sujin. Please do not feel overwhelmed by the timer rules and make sure that you keep within the time limits. With all the meeting rules introduced, let us get going with the speeches of the day. Our first speaker for the day is Kushbu Shah. I request her speech evaluator, Shobha, to please share with us the speech details and the project purpose.
Sure. Thank you, Deepa. So Kushbu is going to be speaking from the Pathways Persuasive Influence Level 2, Project One Evaluation Feedback. That is, today she will be giving a first speech, get a feedback, and then her second speech will be later on. The purpose of this project is for Kushbu to present a speech on any topic, receive feedback, and apply the feedback as I said. Back to you, Deepa.
Thank you, Shobha. Moving on, Kushbu Shah. Thank you, mom. Thank you, mom. Kushbu Shah.
Thank you, Madam Toastmasters. Have you ever felt out of sorts or disorganized? Even the thought of calling a friend is just an overwhelming... You don't want to call even of your best friends? You are in a funk and nothing is helping you out? Has this ever happened to all of you? It was happening to me this Saturday morning. My husband has gone out for an office event. I was alone at my home, and I didn't want to do anything. I was just not in mood. I didn't want to call my friends. I didn't want to do anything. I was just overwhelmed, maybe by situations or by just my own thoughts. I came out of my bed and decided to go out for shopping on a nearby complex, and I just opened my wardrobe, and a pile of clothes followed me. Oh, no, and I just shut it back. I don't want to go out. I don't want to go out. It's just so much of unorganization. I just shut it back. So, and I was getting bored. What do I do now? I just didn't have anything else to do. My husband was also not there. I was getting bored, and then a thought of my mom came to my mind. She always says that whenever I get bored, I organize my wardrobe. And I was like, "No, no, 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 no. I don't want to do that. It's so unorganized. I don't want to do... I don't want to organize my wardrobe." And then my heart said, "Give it a try. At least give it a try." And I was like, "Okay, let's try it." I finished my breakfast, and then I opened my wardrobe again, and then took a glance of all of the clothes. A pile of some clothes here, some used or, you know, tagged, with-tagged dresses some here. Everything was unorganized. And there you see a bunch of some chiffon tops hugging each other, falling on each other. You know chiffon tops, they love each other so much, they fall for each other a lot, right? So they were there. I took them all out, one by one, one by one, and there you are. I was missing you. I wanted you. On the Valentine's Day, I was looking for you. My lovely red job. I found you now. I wish I could have wore you that day, but don't mind. Maybe now some other day. I emptied my wardrobe, found so many lost pieces somehow that went missing. I don't know how. I folded all of my clothes slowly and slowly, and then I realized there are many clothes which I have worn a lot of time. So I decided to give them away. I took some of my clothes and created a separate pile just for giving them away. I sent that pile. Thank you so much for serving me. Thank you so much for being in my wardrobe. Thank you for making me prettier every time I wore you. And thank you so much. And then I get all of my stuff which I wanted to keep back into my wardrobe, one by one. I was thinking again, that part that came again. You know, thoughts always come. You know, thoughts are like in queue. They are standing right behind each other, one after another, one after another. And they come back, and they come back. So here my thought, come again, about my mom. I was thinking that how this simple thing helped me a lot, right? And I was thinking and giving away my clothes, and I realized, "Oh, my God, I'm giving away my clothes. I will have space in my wardrobe, so I should go for shopping." And then the thought about the nearby complex came again. They are running a 50% discount. That definitely calls for a shopping. I should go and get something to shop, right? And you know what? The Women's Day is also coming. So definitely I will need something. I don't have anything to wear that day. I will need definitely something, right? So I will go and do some shopping. And with all these thinking, I was so recharged. I was so joyful. And then I had a thought about my mom again. How many things, on the everyday basis, I learned from her? So many things, right? Waking up early, book-reading habits, organizing the wardrobe, and whatnot. She also even used to tell me that always make a note of things that you want to do in your life, especially when you are in good mood. So when you are getting bored, you take that note out and do something out of that and do a checkbox, you know? Take it, just a checkbox, and the thing is done, and you are out of your boredom too. And you learn something new too, right? So many things I learned from my mom, right? And now that my wardrobe and everything is looking good, and I again, you know, the thought came about myself, the thought, you know, the next one in the queue, it just came in my mind again. I was feeling happy. I was feeling so happy. I felt like I met myself again after a very long time. I felt so good. And as they say, happiness is infectious. So I decided to call my friends and infect them. It's been a while. I haven't talked to them. It's been long. I should talk to them and get to know about them, what's going on, what things are going on, make some plans about meeting with them, or maybe plan about some shopping. I have to go for shopping about Women's Day, right? I need to get a new dress. And then the other thought about the organization came again, that how a simple activity of organizing your wardrobe filled me with so much of joy that I am now out of my boredom. I want to talk to my friends. I have organized my wardrobe, and I'm ready for shopping again, right? So next time, when you all get bored, don't get bored. Organize your wardrobe. And then one more thought from that queue came to me. I was thinking about my mom again. She is right, right? Moms are right, always right, right? Thank you, mom.
Thank you, Kushbu. And yes, I cannot imagine a life without my mom. Our second speaker for the day is Sarah Tang.
Toastmaster, can you give one minute for people to give the feedback?
We have shared the evaluation link on the chat. I request you all to please take one minute to fill the feedback form. Timer, could you please give us one minute for filling the feedback?
Yes.
Madam Toastmasters, one minute up.
Thank you, Sujin. Our second speaker for the day is Sarah Tang. I request her speech evaluator, Lakshmi, to please share with us the speech details and the project purpose. Over to you, Lakshmi.
Thank you, Deepa. Good evening, everyone. Sarah's pathway is motivational strategies. She is going to be giving a speech on her Level 1 Project 3, that is, research and presenting. Sarah, I'm all ears. Back to you.
On a visit to the farmer's market, Sarah talked to a passionate beekeeper and learned about the social structure of the honeybees. Please welcome Sarah Tang, Just Bees. Just Bees, Sarah Tang.
Is there a natural order? We often look to the rest of the animal kingdom for clues. For instance, we study bulls to find a genetic basis for monogamy and polygamy. We also look at social animals like chimpanzees to see how they establish a hierarchy and create community. Today, I'd like to share what I learned from a local beekeeper about the strange society of bees. Bees have a strict division of labor among three castes. There's one thousandth of worker bees, hundreds of male drones, and one queen. Worker bees are the bees that you see buzzing around. Worker bees are all female, and they do all the work. They make wax to build the honeycombs, they forage for food, they feed the larvae, and they defend the hive with their stingers. From the day they're born until the day they die, worker bees work. They work so hard that their lifespans are the shortest of all three roles, just over a month. Worker bees have a 12-hour shift. They make 10 one-hour trips per day to gather food. A worker bee visits 100 flowers in a day. She sucks nectar into her abdomen and collects pollen on the back of her legs, and she can carry up to her own weight in nectar and pollen. When she gets back to the hive, she brings the nectar up into her mouth, gives it to another honeybee to pack it away. The enzymes from the bee's belly thicken the nectar into honey. To put it simply, honey is just bee vomit. It takes this nectar of about 5 million flowers to create one pint of honey. Think about that the next time you purchase the sweets of their labor. Honey and pollen is intended to be food for the bees. Worker bees will feed the honey to the rest of the colony, including drones. Drones are all male bees, and they do absolutely no work. They don't make wax, they don't make honey, they don't feed the babies, and they don't even have stingers to help protect the hive. Their only job is to mate with a queen, and they die soon after the act. Just like worker bees will die if their stinger is ripped from their body, drones have a barbed member that will be ripped out of their abdomen during mating. On your average day, a drone will go out and just hang out and wait for a queen from another hive to pass them by. When they catch the scent of a queen, ooh la la, they will swarm after her. The successful drones will die a glorious death, and the unsuccessful drones will just go back home and get fed by the worker bees. This goes on until the winter, when food becomes scarce. Then the worker bees will finally kick out those bombs, I mean drones. This is why the word drone also means one that lives off the labors of others. The queen bee is, of course, a female. She is the only female designated to lay eggs. She is no different from the other females, except that she is raised on a diet of royal jelly. She also emanates a scent that prevents the other females from laying eggs. At a young age, the young queen will go out to mate, and she'll make multiple mating trips until her body has enough sperm stored for the rest of her life, which is two to four years. From then on, she'll never leave the hive. She'll just make eggs from day to day. A queen lays about 2,000 eggs per day. She's able to control the sex of every egg. Females are fertilized diploid eggs. Males are unfertilized haploid eggs. Only hundreds out of tens of thousands of eggs will be male. From the day they're born, those males will get special treatment. The worker bees will help them out of their cells and immediately feed them. Meanwhile, the worker bees, they have to climb out of the cells themselves, and their first task is to clean the cell from which they're born. The queen herself is the slave to the colony. If she doesn't make enough eggs, then the colony will make a new queen bee, and they'll either neglect or kill the old queen. The division of labor among bees seems overwhelmingly unfair. However, bees are just bees. I don't think bees have existential crises. They don't question or protest their duty. They just do. Human societies often have very similar inequalities as bee societies. However, we can question the social order. We can protest it, and we can change it. For humans, it's often difficult to just be like a bee. But maybe for us, this is natural. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. That was some thought. I think I've learned more about bees today than ever. I request our timer, Sujin, to please give us all one minute, and request everybody else in the meeting to please give feedback on Sarah's speech.
Madam Toastmaster, time is up.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our final speaker for the day is Renee Yau. I request her speech evaluator, Samantha, to please share with us the speech details and the project purpose.
Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. Renee's pathway is dynamic leadership. She will be giving her Level 3 Project 1, Negotiate the Best Outcome. The purpose of this project is for her to learn about different types of negotiation and strategies that can be used when negotiating. The purpose of the speech is for her to share some aspects of the past or future negotiation in her life. Thank you. Back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you, Samantha. Renee and her mom recently had a tough conversation. The book Never Split the Difference has helped her learn about active listening and more. Please welcome Renee Yau. You get what you negotiate. You get what you negotiate, Renee Yau.
Why do you think getting married and having kids are the only options to be happy, especially when you are divorced and our relationship isn't going so well, is it? That was the last sentence that I said to my mom before I rudely hung up. My mom, all she wants me to do is to get married and have kids, or my life will forever be ruined. I disagree. Well, I haven't talked to her for a very long time. After I read the book Never Split the Difference by a former FBI agent, Chris Voss, I realized that negotiation is an art and science. People like to be heard, understood, and appreciated. It's not about being right, but about having the right mindset. Practice tactical empathy, mirroring, and labeling are some of the tactics I learned from reading this book. Tactical empathy. Tactical empathy is used to understand someone's feelings and emotions, especially to hear what's actually behind the emotions. To do that, I am able to potentially increase my influence in the moments to come in a conversation. Voss defines empathy as the ability to recognize the perspective of a counterpart and the vocalization of that recognition. We're not there to agree with someone's value system or beliefs. That's sympathy. Now, after learning about empathy, I put myself in my mom's shoes. She's lonely. After a divorce of her parents, she has had some trust issues. she has had some trust issues, have been by herself the last thirty-plus years. Her value system is very conservative. Her parenting style stayed at its infant ever since we left her when we were ten years old. And last but not least, her love for me, of course, remains pure and utmost. After going through that exercise, I was much calmer. I was able to feel her pain, her fear, and her loneliness. Number two, mirroring. Mirroring is a technique where you repeat the last three words or select one, two, three words from the sentence someone just said. We don't like differences, and we're drawn to similarities. Mirroring is an art of insinuating similarity, which facilitates bonding. When I first tried mirroring, it was kind of weird and awkward. I felt like the kid who wasn't paying full attention in class and got caught by the teacher and just tried to blurt out the last three words and said, okay, I was listening. But after giving it a couple more tries, I realized it actually sharpens your active listening skills. Instead of focusing on words like getting married or having kids, I'm more focused on more important words, like "to be happy" in that dialogue with my mom. Voss explains to us that we often practice selective listening, hearing only what we want to hear. Our minds are great at focusing on a cognitive bias for consistency rather than truth. And in fact, this book even had a paragraph about how four FBI agents all came together for this hostage negotiation, where they actually need each other's help and support for active listening. Even trained professionals had to have support. Me, of course, I have to be more diligent practicing active listening. Three, labeling. Labeling is a tactic where you use to validate someone's emotion by acknowledging it. We tend to follow by words like "it sounds like," "it seems like," "it looks like" to label certain emotions. Then after that, pause and wait for the other counterpart to respond. Voss explains that this label further diffuses your counterpart's power, because we all want to talk about happy things. But the faster you can interrupt the action of amygdala from a counterpart's, that's the part of your brain where it generates fear. The faster you can generate the feeling of well-being, trust, and trust. When my mom was screaming into the phone, yelling at me, saying that I was ungrateful, I was stubborn, and I'm gonna die alone, I didn't know how to respond to her. I didn't know how to respond to her fear. I was overwhelmed by her concerns and loneliness. Instead, I said a lot of things I shouldn't have said. Perhaps a single sentence like "it sounds like you're concerned" could easily do. I decided to call my mom again and redo that conversation. Hey, Mom. About that conversation on marriage, let's talk more about it. Oh yeah, of course, you should get married, have kids. You do not want to die alone. She's very insistent. It sounds like you're very concerned about my happiness. See what I just did there? Practiced empathy and labeled her emotions concerned. Oh yeah, of course I am. I'm your mother. Who wouldn't want their kids to be happy? She jumped right in. To be happy. I repeated the last three words using the mirroring technique and paused. Yes, of course I want you to be happy. She couldn't even wait till the end of the four seconds and jumped right in. Thank you, Mom. I love you. Not getting married or having kids right away doesn't necessarily mean I'm sad. I explained calmly. In fact, I may live a slightly different life from yours, but I could be extremely happy. That conversation went on for much longer, and we talked about our different value system and timeline and future projects. Of course, we didn't agree on everything, but we took a big step to talk about what it meant to both of us, which was a lot better than the first time around. Successful negotiators negotiate in other people's worlds. To master that, we need to first practice empathy, mirroring, and labeling. No matter if you're trying to get the next new car or ask for a raise or deliberating with your parents, remember that we're all people who want to be heard, understood, and appreciated. It's not all you want, it's what you negotiate. Thank you, Toastmasters.
It's not what you want, it's what you negotiate. Thank you so much, Remy. I request all of you, let's all of us take a minute to fill the feedback form for Remy. Madam Timer, could you please give us one minute?
Master, time's up.
Thank you, thank you, Suojin. Moving on to the next item on our agenda for today, I would now like to introduce you to the Table Topics Master of the Day, Madhu. Over to you, Madhu.
Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. Hello, fellow Toastmasters. I am your Table Topics Master for today. What goes on in this section of the meeting is I will pick someone at random to answer a question related to the theme. And you have one to two minutes to give your answer. So if the timer can give us a green signal at one minute, a yellow signal at one and a half minutes, and a red at two minutes, and you also have a thirty seconds grace, I believe. So let's get started. Today's theme is very interesting, right? Negotiation. So important, but so scary at times. It can be really overwhelming to get into a high-stakes negotiation, right? So let's get started. I'll ask my first question to Jojo. Someone once said that deals happen when both the negotiating parties are equally unhappy. Do you agree with that statement? If yes, why? If not, why not? Jojo?
I'm sorry, I probably lost you. Your voice is kind of breaking up. Would you please repeat that question again? I apologize for that.
Sure. So someone once said that deals happen when negotiating parties, both the negotiating parties are equally unhappy. Right? So do you agree with that statement? And what are your thoughts about that statement, I guess?
I would say yes or no. I would say yes. I would say deals happens when two parties reach a consensus. And that consensus is coming from the negotiation and also some compromises as well. So it's a trade-off, and also we all, both parties need to evaluate ourselves. What can we give? What can we take? So the give-take and take, that's the arts, and that's also part of the process of, part of the process of negotiation. So when I say yes, is sometimes the deal can be achieved because, you know, both parties, it's been a long time then both parties negotiating, and it's like a back-and-forth communication, but without reaching any consensus. So both parties get tired, so they kind of like just give up and try to reach that. But that can be also happen when both parties are happy, because both of them, you know, both parties feel that their expectations are achieved, and they also take what they want. But they can also compromise what they don't want. They also can give up, but they also can compromise what they can give up. So back to you, topic, Toastmaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Jojo. That's true, right? That is given-take in every negotiation, and that's a very good point. Thank you for sharing that with us. My next question, I'm going to ask Yukiko Kurishima if I'm saying your name right?
Yes, right.
Hi, Yukiko. So my question for you is, can you tell us about a time when a negotiation you were involved in went really well or went really badly for you? And would you do something differently? Would you think now that you would do something differently in that negotiation?
Thank you. So the negotiation, the question is that negotiations went bad for me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And what you would do differently, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Toastmasters. Well, I remember the once the negotiations failed, when I worked in the same room with my colleagues and the room temperature was too hot to me. I don't like too hot because I can't concentrate in a hot place. So I wanted it to the room cooler, because those who feel too cold can get more and can get comfortable. But for me, the room is too hot, so I can do nothing because I can do nothing. So I asked the others to to make the room more cooler. But they said it's comfortable for us, and if it gets cooler, it is too cold for them. And at last, I gave up. I, so, but if I could, maybe if I could, looking back, I could be maybe providing, suggesting to change of the place, because place near to the air conditioner was very, more cooler. So maybe if I could negotiated it again, maybe I suggested this with them, okay, the temperature is the same, okay, but I wanted it to sit chair more near to the air conditioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Yukiko. You must be happy now that you're working from home. So maybe you don't have to negotiate the room temperature with someone anymore. And thank you for that insight. My next question is for Mirna. Okay, so my question for you is, what are some tips and tricks you employ when you're entering a high-stakes negotiation? Do we have Mirna?
I, yeah.
Do you hear me?
Yes, I hear you now.
All right, so high-stakes negotiation. I'm thinking that might be something with a lot of money or something where the negotiation means a lot to the two people involved or the two persons involved in the negotiation. In a high-stakes negotiation, I think it's important that before you go into the negotiating table, that you learn everything you can about the person you're negotiating with. I'm thinking in terms of marketing. In marketing, before you go to negotiate, let's say cosmetics, which is a billion-dollar industry. Before you go into negotiating, to the negotiating table with a billion-dollar company, you need to know all you can about that company, about their psychology. It takes a lot of psychology to understand the cosmetics business because they deal with females mostly. And so that company has done a lot of research on what females prefer. And also, they've done a lot of research on the different kinds of ethnic groups. What, for what, what color, the color that you might have in terms of skin color, what is the best blush or what is the best eyeshadow? So what I'm trying to say is that first learn about the person that you're meeting with in a high stakes, because it might mean that there is a lot of money involved. You might want a big million-dollar contract. If you go in there not knowing anything about what, how they think or the psychology of what they're trying to do for their customers, then how are you going to negotiate? You have to be able to know their background so that you can clinch them. So you can find that topic or that, let's say, that marketing strategy that they're looking for, that product, the product that they're looking for. So you do a lot of research when you go in, and your presentation has to be just like we're doing in Toastmasters. You have to go in knowing how to do a presentation. Because in marketing, it's all about how you speak and how you move your body and how you present your graphics and how you're going to click into that psychology of those customers. We know that advertisements, a lot of times, they're lying. A lot of times, a cream for wrinkles is not really going to take away all your wrinkles, but they know that women want to look young. So you have to go in there knowing how you're going to negotiate and what they're looking for. And in that way, you will get their interest. And then you have to know at what level, how much money you can buy them for. I didn't see the yellow. I didn't see the green and the yellow. I just saw the red.
That's all right. Yeah. Okay.
I didn't get the warning, so.
Thanks, Mirna. That was, that was very insightful. That's true. You need to know your negotiating parties. Thank you. I think that's all the time we have for Table Topics today. It was a fun discussion. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Madhu. Yes, indeed. Those were some real interesting conversations and observations. We will now transition into the evaluation section of our meeting. I call upon our general evaluator, Megan, to kickstart the evaluation portion of the meeting. Megan?
Thank you, Toastmaster Deepa. Good evening, everyone. My job tonight is to facilitate our speech evaluations, to solicit our functionary reports, and then to share my feedback on how the meeting went. So first, let's start with our speech evaluations. Our first evaluator is Shoba Rao, who is evaluating Kushbu's speech. Please help me welcome Shoba.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, everyone, and a special evening to you, Kushbu. I think your speech had I think your speech had all the elements that would. That this particular audience would appreciate, especially the mom part. Who doesn't like talking about moms and how they give us love? So you understood the pulse of the audience and you opened your speech with an excellent question again, saying, have you been overwhelmed? Have you looked at with your wardrobe and thought that that thing has to be cleaned someday? So you had all the aspects of hooking the audience to your speech at with your opening. And through your speech, I could see you used your body language also quite effectively. Though you were sitting, you still had a lot of movements with your hands. And they especially liked the part where you said, you know, your thoughts are in line one after another and then they just come. That was done very well. So you you've used body language uh in a suitable way, I would say. And you're ending also with a thank you, mom, again. Who doesn't like that? Now, if I were to think of how to enhance the speech, I would think of few ways that I can do. One would be organization. You had a good opening, but then when you started talking throughout your speech, the middle of your speech. It almost felt like thoughts were overflowing. You were talking about thoughts. But when you were giving the speech also, it felt like there were thoughts written all over. Or you you did had some amount of organization where you went from cleaning your wardrobe and finally thinking about shopping. You went to to a store and then you wanted to donate, you had everything in picture. But I think it could have all tied, had been tied together using an anecdote with your mom, let's say. If you had an anecdote where you were organizing the wardrobe with your mom and used it, that would have actually tied it very well. And just look out for grammar here and there. English is not the first language for most of us, including me. So let's just make some effort so that you can look out for the language. And another thing I would say would be, your body language was great, try to stand up and speak. Then things will flow naturally because then you will tend to pause where you want to pause. When you're standing up, i- i- you your vocal variety automatically comes as well. And one more uh point I noted was the Zoom background. Maybe you can do it next time because you were trying to show your red chiffon cloth and it was all hidden behind the.
Okay.
All in all, it was a great speech. I would love to hear a similar speech from you next time. Just with an anecdote with your mom and ended with a nice quote talking about your mom. A quote, something like, you know, like, life doesn't come with with a manual, so it comes with moms. And thank you, mom. Just ending with a flourish. Excellent speech, Kushbu. I'm waiting to hear from you next time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Shoba, for great feedback. I'll I'll take care of all of these things. Thank you.
Back to you, Master Evaluator.
Thank you, Shoba. Thank you very much for your evaluation. And next, we have Lakshmi Shridhar evaluating Sarah Tang's speech. Please help me welcome Lakshmi.
Thank you, Megan. What an informative speech. I knew that worker bees work hard, but didn't know that they have a twelve hour shift. No. I really liked the part when you said, kick out the drones during winter. The vocal variety and the hand gesture used was really good. The second thing that I liked was the way you compared humans and the bees. When you were talking about how the worker bees never question and keep working, I could feel that in your voice, you know? And I was also thinking about so many women in this world who suffer silently. Just the way you said, I was overwhelmed by grief. Uh I would have enjoyed it more if there are more facial expression. They just do it. We can protest, ask questions, something like that. Also, next time, I would like you to reduce a few pauses here and there, not too many, but just here and there. Uh because some of the pauses did not seem to be done purposely. I really enjoyed the syllables that you used, like sweets of labor and all that. It was so beautiful, the words. I really enjoyed that. Overall, I enjoyed the vocal variety, your gentle hand gestures, which I have never done. I never get it, but you did it beautifully and the information you collected, it was amazing. I just think that more facial expression and less pauses would have made the speech very interesting. And the best part of the speech was, like I said, the choice of words. Next time, when I have this. I'll be reminded of bee won't, yuck. But I will go ahead and have it just because of the worker bees' effort. Thank you, Sarah. It was an amazing speech. Thank you for all the information.
Thank you, Lakshmi. What a helpful evaluation. Great. And our third evaluator tonight is Samantha. Samantha Jamwale will be evaluating Renee's Renee Yao's speech. Please help me welcome Samantha.
Thank you, Madame Toastmaster. Uh Renee, I loved your speech. Um understanding who you are negotiating with is so important when it comes to reaching an agreement. Um I felt your emotions immediately when you started talking about your mom and how you felt about that conversation the first time. I don't do a lot of negotiating at work, so when you used a personal story, I was able to think of a time in my life when. I could have used empathy, mirroring, and labeling to negotiate an understanding instead of an argument. You really excelled at using your hands, but hand gestures and voice inflections. Uh something I've also been working on, so that's why I noticed it especially. And I really liked how you moved into different positions when you were having that conversation with your mom over the phone. I was able to understand who was talking at that moment. Uh despite your mic malfunctioning, you muted yourself, so we didn't have to hear that high pitched sound. Greatly appreciated. And you continued without skipping a beat. Uh I suggest that you work on eye contact specifically when you strayed from the camera looking for an answer. But other than that, I loved the speech. I thought it was so great. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. All right, three great evaluations for three great speeches. Let's move now to our reports. First, we'll go to our timer. Su Jin, can you please share with us your report?
Okay, thank you. I will share today's time report. Uh for Kushbu's speech is six minutes, thirty thirty and thirty three seconds. And for Sarah's speech, uh six minutes and ten seconds. And Renee's speech, a minute twenty per second. For table topics, Jojo uh is one minute and thirty five seconds. And Yukiko is one minute and fifty seconds. And then Mirna, Mirna is thirty minutes and eighty seconds. Uh for evaluation, Shoba is three minutes and twenty seconds. And Lakshmi is a two minutes and eighteen seconds. And Samantha, one minute and sixty seconds. Back to you, Madame, uh back to you, uh the, yeah, general evaluator.
Thank you so much, Su Jin, for your report. And now we will move to our grammarian, Helen. Helen, can you please share with us how we did tonight?
Thank you, Madame E evaluator. Quite a few were able to use the word overwhelmed or overwhelming. Uh Deepa, Kushbu, Sarah, Shoba, Madhu, and Lakshmi. All were able to use the word, so thanks so much for playing along with that. I also commented on the use of sweets of their labor in that wonderful speech about bees. That was such a wonderful turn of phrase. Renee, I think you used the word trust twice in a sentence. There may have been another word you're gonna. Insert there, but the word trust came out twice. I know it happens to me sometimes, too. And Kushbu, you tend to drop your articles. By that, I mean the word the. Before something, you would say just not mood, instead of just not in the mood. Or just in the back of the closet, you would drop the word the. So you might want to consider adding that. Um to your repertoire when you're practicing your speeches. But it was a great job by everyone this evening in the use of grammar. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Helen. We appreciate your not overwhelming us with your report. There, I got it in. All right, now let's move to our ah counter. Shannon, how did we do tonight?
Great, we did really well. Kushbu, you had one so, two likes. Six you know, six right. And you used some repeats, but I believe those were intentional. Sarah, I did not find anything. Renee, one ah, one uh. Shoba, one like. Lakshmi, one ah, three um. Samantha, three um. Jojo, one ah, one um, three so. Yukiko, two ah, two uh, one well, one so. And Mirna, three uh. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Shannon. All right, and now for my report, my evaluation of the meeting. Of course, as always, this was yet another fabulous meeting, terrific speeches and terrific evaluations. We had our meeting theme identified and our roles filled and confirmed in advance. That's always helpful for making meetings run smoothly. We started at six fifty nine by my device, which is right on time. We did great. Our president presented the theme beautifully. And then our Toastmaster of the evening, Deepa escorted us through um. While negotiating her way through the mute button, uh would further presented us with the theme. In more detail, she did a great job there and escorting us throughout all of the parts of the evening. Beautiful job, Deepa. This might be your first time. You did a really great job. Uh our profiler experimented with screen share. This is the place to do that. That was fabulous. We like to see that. Um I think we went over our two minute time allotted for the profile. And probably where we could cut is in the introduction and description of negotiation. Since both the president and the Toastmaster of the day did that, that would give you a little time to dive right into the profile. Which was so interesting, Gloria Steinem. Thank you. Our speeches, of course, were great with thank you, mom, just bees and negotiation. Uh and again, Renee managed that audio issue in an exemplary manner, just perfect example for all of us. Thank you. The evaluators all knew about their projects. They introduced them well. They were ready to give their feedback and their evaluations. I really liked Shoba's suggestion of an anecdote and a closing phrase. The closing phrase is great. We talk a lot in Toastmasters about how we open speeches. The closing phrase is like wrapping it up with a bow. That was brilliant. And Lakshmi's suggestion of being purposeful about our pauses and the use of facial expression, really helpful. And. Oh, I think I've skipped here, but also the sharing about Renee's emotions, how we all felt them. That was really wonderful. Um describing her deep personal response helps the speaker understand their effectiveness and their impact on the room. Madhu did a great job with table topics, masterful command of the room, great questions. It is very kind and not normal Toastmasters procedure to call on a person's name and then call the question. But I noticed we do that with our guests and it is a thoughtful way to make sure our guests feel welcome. And not overwhelmed uh by the table topics portion. It was positive, it was humorous, it was educational. A great job, Madhu. And then Renee opened with these terrific slides and I know she will be using them again. Giving our guests a very effective explanation of who we are as a club and what information guests might have. All of this is incredibly helpful, really wonderful time or job yet again. Uh Women Lead, and now I would like to turn things back to our Toastmaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan, for the helpful evaluation. I turn it back to the president. Renee?
Thank you. Can you guys see my screen? Okay? Yes, I would just like to end on another quote. He who has learned to disagree without being disagreeable has discovered the most valuable secret of negotiation. That also came from Chris Voss as well. And before we end the call, I do have a couple of the announcements and also followed by some guest feedback as well. So first of all, I want to congratulate both Samantha and Sarah for finishing level one. Congratulations. And a great job. And we will try to celebrate it in more of a formal capacity by sending you guys some gifts and certificates. Once we figure all of that out with the money coming in. So congratulations. Well done. The second thing is, since we just chartered last month, uh two weeks ago, we are doing some pathways trainings. Uh so Shoba and A B G R Club mentors, they will be hosting some pathway training this coming up weekend. Um in the chat window right here is a doodle link where you get to select the time slot that you are available to participate. And learn more about pathways. But of course, if you are a pathway savvy user, you do not have to participate. And there are five options for you to take advantage of. We will select one or maximum two time slot that's the most available for everyone. After that, we'll follow a Zoom link uh to the most selected time slots and share with you guys. We'll start with the two twenty minute presentation and then break out into for everyone creating their own accounts and things like that. And of course, our A B G is our club mentor. He is actually gonna be hosting a separate workshop. Uh to craft your speech this Friday, especially for those who are considering competing in our upcoming. Um international and table topic competition next Wednesday. This uh A B's workshop this Friday, twelve to one, will be a great place to actually learn about crafting your speech. All of the next couple of slides is actually about upcoming meetings and themes. And all of them are actually listed on our womanlytm.com's meeting page. So we will follow after the uh the competition, next theme will be emotional intelligence. And then after that, on March tenth, we will have the March pop up workshop with Marine, who is another um finalist. And one of our international speech competition, she will share with us how to overcome self doubt of imposter syndrome. And after that, we have another regular meeting, motivation on March seventeenth. So you can find all of the details online. And of course, we get some opportunity to win some money. Money is always great. Uh so first of all, is to finish nine club goals. For those of you guys who wants to take advantage of, you know, the Toastmasters organization overall. They have set up some pretty good goals for all of us. That means like for those who have already paid, is who's a paid member. Um please continue to submit your interest to want to give a speech. Everything that you're doing is gonna add towards us winning one hundred and one dollars. So I want to thank every one of you for being part of this. And if we, if you have friends who want to join, eight additional new members by April twenty eighth can also help us win one hundred and one dollars. And in March, we'll be hosting an open house challenge. Invite anyone that may find this interesting. That meeting will be extremely exciting. And if we do get five new members, we get to win sixty more dollars. How exciting is that? And um I do want to have a quick announcement about our new officers. The two highlighted, Samantha and Kushbu, will be our new treasurer and VP uh PR. So I know many of you guys actually have expressed interest, also want to be the next new officer. We do have monthly officer meetings where you get to see how the sausage is being made behind the scene. Some of you guys like to have Toastmasters be your test ground of your new ideas. This is the safest place to try every new ideas that you have. So we absolutely welcome you to come in and sit in, bring your new ideas, because you never know, next term you might be our officers. And communication is key. A lot of us are on Slack. And of course, if you're not a Slack user, find us on Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn. Whatever channel you want, we are there to support you. Last but not least, for the paying members, um if you guys actually would like to give us a little bit of testimonial, we're gonna be updating our webpage. And you get an option of either posting your name or not posting your name. I think this, we can help bring more. I think this, we can help bring more guests in. And that brings me to guest feedback. And for those who are really shy, don't really want to come off near, come off camera, if you want to just share with us in the guest feedback in the link, that's great also. But we do want to hear from you, all of the guests. So I'm gonna unshare my screen and hear from all of you with the last four minutes that we have about your feedback to us. How did you find out about this meeting? What did you like about it? And things like that. Alright, any brave guests?
Go ahead, Leslie.
Leslie, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Hey, hi. I'm actually a member of Lakeview Toastmasters. And I went to a district meeting. We had a district meeting. And since I'm the president of Lakeview, I went to the district meeting. And somebody mentioned this club. Somehow it came up, and I just thought it sounded intriguing. So I made a note that maybe I would try to visit. And I enjoyed my visit very much. You guys are just, you know, I was very impressed with all three speakers. And I enjoyed my visit very much, and I think I will come back.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you. Thanks for visiting us.
Hi, and this is Shirley. I just wanted to say, I really enjoyed the meeting as well. And how I found it is, I heard you, Renee, give an evaluation. You won the evaluation contest.
Yes.
And when you talked about your background, you mentioned the club. And I was really excited to find out the times and, and, you know, again, when the meetings happened. But I realized it conflicts with my Toastmaster Club, True Talking Toastmasters, at the same time. But I didn't go to the meeting today there. I went here, so don't tell them. But I really enjoyed your meeting. I think it's a great club. You have a lot of members and great speakers. So it was a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. There is actually some members, due to work circumstances, couldn't join the official meetings. We do try to keep them posted on opportunities, especially that doesn't fall on a Wednesday. For example, ABG's workshop crafting or speech this coming Friday could be a very good one. Because these are very informative sessions that's really keeping our members in mind to continue to hone in on their skill sets. And of course, with Megan being a district director, and many district events are actually hosting on many different days. So you guys are more than welcome to go onto Toastmasters webpage and look for the other events as well. Next time, I will make sure that there is a link, sharing with you all what are some of the other events happening. For example, if you guys want to learn about manager versus leader, that was in one of the emails that was sent to me today. So those are all very great events to definitely leverage the resources that you have in the community. But thank you so much for joining us. We will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other guests?
Well, how was your experience?
Well, thank you for asking, Abhijit. This is the second meeting I've been able to attend as a guest. And for the second time in a row, I'm continuing to be blown away. The speeches were fantastic. Everything was conducted wonderfully. I, I feel like I get more out of attending these meetings in a guest capacity than I do for most other Toastmasters meetings and events I have attended in a more involved capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. We'd love for you to join us. And I know the title sounds a little, you know, only for a woman, like Woman Lead. But we do wrote it on the webpage that, we did write it on the webpage. It is for both men and women, and ABG is here representing for sure. And we do have also paying member who are men or identify as men, whatever your preference is. And we mainly do that is hope to bring the underserved topic to the forefront and really create a safe place for whatever gender you identify as. But thank you so much for stopping by. Any other guests?
Thank you. I, I joined your variations workshop, and I found out your club. Thank you. And I learned a many insight and a new idea from this showtime. And I was overwhelmed by many information for club. It seems a very active club. Thank you very much. It's now, I'm during my lunch break because I'm in Tokyo. But I had a very great time. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome you every lunch break that you have, every other Wednesday or every Wednesdays. And we try to keep the schedule as, as packed as needed, as informative as it could be for, for all of you guys. So thank you so much for joining us all the way from Tokyo. Any other guests that would like to say a few words?
I can. I just want to say, yeah, thank you for having me. It was pretty easy to get to the meeting. I, I am with Menlo Park Toastmasters, and we were gonna have a joint meeting with another club that Renee was part of. And somehow that, or some, I don't know, but somehow that linked to this Toastmaster. And because there was so much information on your website that I found very interesting, a little bit different than what our club usually does, so, and it's not on the same day. And I had the evening off, so I was like curious, and I really, really enjoyed it. Three speakers. All of you did a great job. I, you know, I'm on level two as well. So I recognize some of these pathways, and it's so much fun to see other people do it. That meeting was really well-run, so kudos to everyone.
Thank you so much, Nini. Say hi to Donnie from Parvi.
And Nini, if you do decide to also join us, every new member is get paired up with a mentor as well. We ensure that your experience is very tailored, and we, whatever goals that you want to achieve, we hope to be there on this journey with you.
Thank you. And next time, I'll try to have better lighting. No, it's hard with, you know, we like to do the facial expression, but I was good to another room. So I wasn't able to do the lighting so well.
That's all good. Thank you. Alright, we are two minutes over and lots of guests today. So for those who are shy, who couldn't come off camera, or technical difficulties, please feel free to send your response in the guest feedback link that Priya has actually graciously put together for all of us, and a very good idea. And thank you all for your time today, and happy negotiating with your people, with the people around you. Alright, see you all next time.